Good evening, everyone. Welcome to Tuesday, January 3rd, 2023. Happy New Year to everyone. Our invocation will be provided by Stephen Ballantyne, Assistant Pastor of Mount Zion Restoration Branch. Please stand for the invocation and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our kind and loving Heavenly Father, we're grateful for the opportunity, Heavenly Father, to thank Thee for Your love and Your tender mercy. And I would ask, Heavenly Father, that You would give direction to those who are on this council, to our mayor, to our manager, to the department heads. Lord, they have a tremendous responsibility in keeping this city safe and running. And I would ask, Heavenly Father, that You would take them into Your loving arms, give them direction on a daily basis, that they might look to Thee, O Heavenly Father, and praise You for this beautiful city that we call Independence. Be ever near us, Lord, is our prayer. In Jesus' name, amen.
I pledge allegiance
to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And Madam City Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Spears.
Here.
Perkins.
Here.
Stewart.
Here.
McCandless.
Here.
Steinmeier.
Here.
Hobart.
Here.
Mayor Rowland.
Here.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk, for taking the roll. Mr. Mayor, please proceed.
I have a, I have a motion to take an agenda item out of order.
Well, actually, probably two. Is that right? The I-STAR and then the other resolution, and then the other ordinance?
Oh, absolutely. First, I would move to take two, 23700, the presentation resolution, a resolution recognizing Christina Ervin as the I-STAR award recipient. I would move to place that, take that first and out of order.
Okay.
Do I need a second and to vote on that item separately?
Do we have a second?
Second.
We've got a second. Any debate, discussion? Hearing no further debate, we've got a motion to move the agenda and move up the presentation resolution and also the ordinance, basically referring to trash, if I'm hearing you correctly.
We haven't, no.
Do them separately?
We have to do them separately.
So which one do you want to do first?
23700.
Okay, 23700 first? But I want to do the presentation. Well, that's fine. So we'll do ordinance 23700 first. No discussion. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Spears.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Stewart.
Yes.
McCandless.
Yes.
Steinmeier.
Yes.
Hobart.
Yes.
Mayor Rowland.
Yes.
Now, Mr. Mayor, please, I have a second motion.
Please.
To take a second agenda item out of order.
Okay.
It is ordinance number 23-0031R. It's under first readings. And that's an ordinance expressing a desire of the Independent City Council to support prohibiting exclusive licensing to any waste removal business. That was an ordinance requested by Councilmembers Steinmeier and Stewart.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? No discussion. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Spears.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Stewart.
Yes.
McCandless.
Yes.
Steinmeier.
Yes.
Hobart.
Yes.
Mayor Rowland.
Yes.
All right, the first one is, we're going to do the I-STAR Award, also known as the Citizen of the Month. And this is going to go to Christina Irving. And is Christina here? All right. Thank you, Christina. This is all for you. Christina has been recognized for her tremendous work and customer service in hospitality. Christina went above and beyond traditional job role to provide setup, teardown, refreshments, and on-call assistance for an Eastern Jackson County Council for State Government Justice Center. Christina was more than willing to assist and pull, excuse me, assist in pulling this off, and it was a two-day event, while keeping her daily task. This event had no connection, excuse me, this event had no connection to her daily work or to her daily work other than being hosted in a conference room that she helped schedule. Christina was at work early and she left after everyone else was gone. Christina didn't have to make herself available. She didn't have to set up and tear down the room. She didn't have to provide her cellphone number, and you're required to repeat that now publicly. Just teasing. But anyway, she gave her cellphone number in case there were any problems or they ran out of refreshments. And she did all of this because she knew the importance of this event. When asked about this, she said, "I don't mind." She knew it was a big task and it had to be accomplished. Christina represented the city and IPL in a professional, in the most professional way possible. This event was a success because of your efforts, and this is why you are extremely deserving of the I-STAR Award. So congratulations and come up and get a picture and receive the certificate.
Yes. Mr. Mayor.
Please.
Before this next item is read, as would typically happen with the first reading on an ordinance, it's my understanding, after discussions with city staff, that this item is more appropriately a resolution than an ordinance. Mr. Walker, if I may address the city manager, is that correct, Mr. Walker?
Please proceed.
Yes, Councilmember Hobart and members of the council, the item that was, was placed on your agenda this evening is written as an ordinance. Typically, we use ordinances to amend or delete or add sections to the city code. As it is, it is Article 5 of Chapter 19 that deals with refuse collections in the city of Independence. What is before you is written more as a policy statement of the council saying, "You're not interested in changing anything about the way our current model works," where we have a certain number of haulers, they're licensed in the city, and our citizens and businesses select the one that meets their needs and works for them. So rather than altering anything about city code, it's our recommendation that you handle this as a resolution, affirming your policy position that you do not wish to change anything about the way the model currently works.
Thank you, Mr. Walker. So, Mr. Mayor, it's my understanding that the, that the requesters and authors of, of this item, Mr. Mayor, I have a motion to change the nature of this agenda item from an ordinance to a resolution. It's my understanding that the authors and submitters, councilmembers Steinmeier and Stewart, support this. And so I'll wait for a second.
Second.
So we've got a motion and a second. Councilmember Stewart, would you like to add anything to the discussion?
Just want to be very clear. Mr. Walker, if this passes this evening, this will put any stop to any conversation of changing anything with the trash service and the city regulating it, correct?
That unless and until somebody decides this is a good idea to talk about again.
Which that would take the city council to do that.
That would take the city council to do that, sir, yes. This is, this item is giving staff direction. This is not an item that the council wishes to entertain any changes to.
Okay, that's all I have. Thank you.
And Councilmember Steinmeier, if I'm correct, you're good with this change and you're comfortable with it?
I am. I, I think it is a great foundational point where we can have further discussion on how we want to create codes for the trash issues that we wish to address, but to leave trash haulers as small businesses and, and remain competitive, one with another, so that they can offer the best quality service for our city. So yes, I'm, I'm in favor of this. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Stewart, anything else?
I do not have anything else, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
For, for clarification, Mr. Mayor, this is only a vote on changing this from an ordinance to a resolution.
That's right. And then we'll have to actually vote on the item itself?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Anyone else? Other discussion on this, just changing it to a resolution? And if I'm correct, Mr. Cover will need a supermajority to do that. Is that correct, according to Robert's rules? Or is it just a simple majority?
This is just a simple majority.
Okay, thank you. Any other further discussion? Madam City Clerk, please call the roll for just approving this to be an ordinance. A resolution, please forgive me.
Councilmember Spears.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Stewart.
Yes.
McCandless.
Yes.
Steinmeier.
Yes.
Hobart.
Yes.
Mayor Rowland.
Yes.
All right, now we're open for a discussion on the item as a resolution. Any concepts or ideas related to the resolution content?
Mr. Mayor.
Please proceed.
Very briefly, Mr. Farrell, I don't mean to address people individually from the dais. We don't typically do that. Mr. Farrell, all, all your employees, your customers, all the folks that support you, we appreciate you. Thank you. I personally would apologize for any sort of fear or misunderstanding or concern that any discussion caused you or your folks. So we are happy to have you as a small business in Independence. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Could I have a motion to approve this resolution?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
I think we've got a motion and a second to approve this resolution. Any further discussion? Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Spears.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Stewart.
Yes.
McCandless.
Yes.
Steinmeier.
Yes.
Hobart.
Yes.
Mayor Rowland.
Yes.
And this resolution passes 7-0. Okay? And then I made a mistake and we didn't vote on Christina's recipient of her I-STAR award. So if I can have a motion and a second for that. Got a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Got a second. Any further discussion? Madam City Clerk, please call the roll for Christina to receive the I-STAR award. Please do.
23-700, a resolution recognizing Christina Ervin, Fiscal Administrator with the Independence Power and Light Department, as the I-STAR Award recipient for January 2023. Councilmember Spears.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Stewart.
Yes.
McCandless.
Yes.
Steinmeier.
Yes.
Hobart.
Yes.
Mayor Rowland.
Yes.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is citizen's request. We do need a motion to suspend the rules to let people from out of the area speak.
I'd move to suspend the rules.
All right, we've got a motion to suspend the rules to allow people from out of the area to speak. Do we have a second?
Second.
We've got a motion and a second to suspend the rules for people from out of the area to speak. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Spears.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Stewart.
Yes.
McCandless.
Yes.
Steinmeier.
Yes.
Hobart.
Yes.
Mayor Rowland.
Yes. Thank you. Thank you. The first person to sign up online or ahead of time was Colleen Huff, so Colleen, you are first to go. So please proceed. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor and council members. Well, I came to speak on behalf of Ted's Trash Service because my whole neighborhood uses them and we love them and I felt what the city was proposing was very unfair to them as a private business and as a small business owner myself. So basically, as long as the resolution has passed, I'm thrilled. And so anyway, I, it's probably the only time Councilmember Hobart and I have agreed on anything, but when he said that he supports Ted's Trash Service and, and how he did not feel that the city should enforce the companies that they chose and put private, you know, small businesses out of business. So anyway, I'm, I'm thankful. So I'll just move on to the second thing that I wanted to speak about, which is that the prayer before the council meeting and as we heard the prayer this evening, it was very appropriate and I just can't even imagine how individuals would consider governor, governing a city without asking for divine intervention. And I've been to enough of these council meetings to know that every prayer that has been said before these council meetings are very appropriate and I just can't, like I said, I, as a Christian, as a believer myself, I can't even imagine thinking that I, in my natural ability, could govern an entire city without asking for God's guidance and God's wisdom. And so I know tonight is the first reading and the actual vote will be on the 17th and I mean, I just ask you because you will be held to a higher standard to, to really strongly consider what the effect of removing prayer would have on our city because if there's anything our city needs, you know, with that almost nightly murders, the crime rate, that just everything else going on in our city, you know, we need God's blessing on our city and our, in His guidance. So that's all I have to say. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Huff. Next up is Mr. McGregor. And then Mr. Farrell, you're next up to speak. So if you could, if you don't mind lining up behind him so you're ready to go when he's going, oh, you're sitting there. So that's close. You're close. So you're good. Thank you, Mr. Farrell. Mr. McGregor, go ahead. You've got five minutes.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Council, and staff. My name is Chad McGregor with IBW Local 53, and I'm here tonight to speak about reliable public power and transparency. On December 18th of 2022, the majority of this council voted against Resolution 22-835 that would have directed the city manager to record livestream and upload meetings of the newly formed City Charter Review Committee. It's the IBW's hope that this committee will meet and collaborate with the goal of improving the city charter. However, many citizens, as well as countless Local 53 members who work for the city, believe the committee was formed by the council with the main goal of selling IPL, the city's utility. IBW Local 53 believes that rates will rise and reliability will decline drastically if you let that happen. The public utility was formed over 130 years ago with a longstanding proud tradition of supplying the citizens of Independence with a combination of one of the most reliable and affordable public power in the region. Do not, do not let the city, citizens and employees down by selling their utility. Show them that you are in fact 100% transparent and have absolutely nothing to hide. Vote yes tonight, please, on Resolution 23-701, directing the city manager to livestream, record, and upload the meetings of the City Charter Review Committee so that everyone can see your transparency and prove there are no secrets hidden. Happy New Year and thank you all for your time.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Farrell, you're next. And then Ted Luce, you'll be next after that. So Ted.
Good evening, everyone.
Mr. Farrell, please proceed.
First off, thank you very much for the hard work you guys put into that to pass that as a resolution. We appreciate that very much. And Hobart, thank you very much for that. I appreciate that. After hearing it on your podcast at first and then hearing it in the study session and then to the point where we are right now, speaks volumes. So, and I, I know that I appreciate everyone in this room that has supported our company over the 63 years that we've been here and you know, I hope that you guys can continue to support, support small businesses and make sure that you guys are transparent with, with the public and with small businesses. If you guys have any questions or any, any problems that you need solutions to with, as it comes to trash service, illegal dumping, littering, whatever, you know, we're, we're here to support you guys because this is our town as well. You know, a lot of our employees were born here, grew up here, and we have nothing but support for the city. So if you guys have any questions, please do ask us. Also, I would like to be, speak in support of 23-701. I think that the city needs to be transparent and I, I believe that these, these city council meetings need to be open to the public and transparent with the public. So that's pretty much all I've got to say tonight, but I very much appreciate what you guys have done on passing that resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. After Ted Luce will be, is it Betty Weaver? So Ted, go right ahead.
Mayor, members of the council, I wanted to, again, just echo what everyone else is saying. I want to support the resolution. Competition, especially in, as it relates to businesses that provide a service, competition ensures excellence. And when you have competition, when the, when the residents of a city can pick the service that best suits their needs, it keeps these businesses providing the utmost service for the residents of Independence. And the residents of Independence deserve no less. So again, thank you and God bless you.
Thank you, sir. Betty Weaver is next, and then right after that is Chris Klein. So Ms. Weaver, did I, am I saying it correctly?
Weaver, yes.
Okay.
Well, I had come here on behalf of Ted's Trash because we did not want to lose them and I'm very happy that, for your decision. So I will hold my tongue on what I had to say.
Thank you very much. And then Mr. Klein, hang on just one second and we'll have Maria Vargas right after you. So go right ahead, Mr. Klein.
Yeah, just wanted to repeat what everybody else has already said. Just on behalf of me and my neighbors, thank you for taking this off the table. Ted's Trash is, you know, we, we went with all the, the bigger corporate companies when we first moved to Independence and definitely didn't have very good luck with them. Then when we did switch over to our local company, we had much better service. So I appreciate that. The one thing I would add is I, I did agree with the, the portion of requiring everybody to have trash service. I think that would help clean up the city tremendously. So that is one part of it that I would encourage you to still look into. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Hi, Maria, how are you?
Hi. Well, thank you so much for giving me the time to speak to you guys today. I came here to support Ted's Trash Service. You know, I'm pretty young, but I do want to say that they are very great at what they do. I did have experiences where, I'm not going to mention the company, but they were, you know, we, we were taking the time to separate recycling from regular trash and then putting it together was just, I feel like, you know, that we have to save a world and I feel like being there for a competition and you know, making a grate for a community would really appreciate that and thank you guys for what you guys are doing and I appreciate it. Thanks.
Thank you. And Mr. Epperson?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, City Council. My name is Wes Epperson. I live at 3600 Poplar Avenue. And full disclosure, my trash provider is Republic Trash Service. My mom's is Ted's. My neighbors have Ted's, AAA, Republic Waste Management and Compost Connection. I have a street that's a block long. That's a lot of heavy truck traffic that comes through my neighborhood in a week. So I appreciate the study that the Municipal Services Department put forward. Bottom line on the trash issue, I've seen this issue discussed and the can kicked down the road for several decades in Independence. Starting back in 1977, when I lived in Inglewood, the trash issue came up back then and it's come up before. And I'm not here to speak for any company or whatever, but I would say that as a member of the Street Improvement Oversight Committee and a chair of a community, a neighborhood community organization that's met monthly almost a year, one of the top subjects that we always talk about is trash. It, crime, homelessness and trash is the, the three topics. And trash is a big one. So I'm here to say, and I forgot to mention, unfortunately, in my neighborhood, besides several carriers coming across our city streets, we have some people that have no trash service. We have some people that apparently don't pay their bill because they get skipped. And I'm not saying that Ted's or Republic or anybody skips them, but obviously somebody is. I live in the southwest part of Independence. There's a lot of rental property there. And I don't know if every landlord is supplying trash, if they hire them or if they have their renters do that. We have a lot of trash problems in Independence. So my bottom line is this. Whatever the outcome of this discussion is about trash, I think the bottom line, every residence in the city of Independence, whether it's a homeowner or a renter, should have to hire a trash service. Bottom line. I hope the city council would agree on that. And I hope that there would be some type of regulation of trash in this city. And I would also like to say, as a member and chairman of the Street Improvement Oversight Committee, I support the ordinance 22-111-2R. That improvement of the intersection of 35th and Nolan Road, especially before Cargill Largo opens up, is, is a priority. There's a safety problem there and I hope that the city recognizes that and that, that working together with the state of Missouri, you can improve that intersection. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Epperson. And Mr. Nesbit, if you could just initial. That'd be great. Thank you, sir. Oh, there's, yeah, there's just not one. It's government work. Thank you, sir. Mr. Nesbit, you've got five minutes.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. What Wes said is-
What Wes said is really true on a lot of stuff, especially on the streets. Also, thank you for, also, let's vote on that 35th. You guys have heard me a lot of times about that, so I'm glad we're seeing something get done about that. Also, back to what you guys are going to be looking at, ordinance about amending Article One, the council meetings. I don't know where all that stuff comes from. I mean, we got prayer. You guys want to take prayer out. We're a city. We got a temple. I mean, basically, we're here for God. I mean, I don't know why we want to take prayer out of our council meetings. I mean, that's not right. I mean, we're here for that. The other thing is, I don't understand, I see a lot of this, that we're wanting to take, taking four votes to amend things, to have things brought up on the council. I don't know where all that's coming from, too. I don't know what it is right now. I see that the mayor can bring anything he wants to. The mayor and all you council are voted on by the people. If a district has somebody representing that district and a bunch of people want something brought up to the council, why can't that council member bring it up before the city? I don't understand why it's going to take four people to bring it up. I think that's kind of wrong. I think one person should be able to do that on the council, just like the mayor can. Because, see, it says the mayor, or four votes. There's a lot of that I saw in this article when I looked through it real quick tonight, and I just don't like that. I don't understand where all that's coming from. I don't know if the staff's bringing that, or where it's coming from, because I think that's not right. You guys are up there for the people. The people voted you in. Your voice should be able to be heard on this council to bring up motions, not to have four of you bring one motion up. I mean, that's kind of hard to get four people to agree on something, and I see that happen a lot here. We've got a lot of four to two, three to four votes and stuff like that. So, I'm saying, I don't think that's quite right. We just need to have one person be able to bring up stuff to the city. You all get to vote on it, so why can't they still bring, one person bring it up? I see that. But we need to remember, this is God's country, because it's, so we need to at least keep prayer in this. Thank you.
And that brings us to the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I'd move to approve the reports and recommendations of the city manager.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve this. Any discussion, or does any council members wish to pull something out?
Mr. Mayor.
Please proceed.
Number seven on the consent agenda, please.
Councilmember Perkins has asked for number seven to be pulled out on the consent agenda. Any other items to be pulled out?
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
Item number five and six.
Okay. Anyone else for any other items? Okay. Then we'll have the vote for the consent agenda, minus five, six, and seven, and then we'll vote on each of those items individually and debate them. With that being said, can you please call the roll for the consent agenda?
Councilmember Spheres?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
McCandless?
Yes.
Steinmeier?
Yes.
Hobart?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. If I could, Councilmember Perkins, if we could just go and order five, six, and seven, if that's okay, and we'll come back to you. Councilmember McCandless, if you'd like to discuss item number five, please, that'd be great.
Mr. Mayor, to inquire of the city manager, please.
Please proceed.
Mr. Manager, could you just speak to the action on five and six, and what you anticipate being the benefit to the city?
Yeah, I would be happy to do that, and I would like to begin by thanking our municipal services staff who have worked hard to secure a lot of funding this year and have found some creative ways to put some projects in that we know are high community priorities at a very low cost to our taxpayers as well. With item number five, this is going to add in at 42nd and Nolan, where we know the McDonald's is at there, ramps, ADA accessibility ramps, sidewalks, et cetera, in that area. So, obviously, a highly trafficked area, including pedestrian traffic. Get people out of the streets, along the side of the streets, and onto the sidewalks in that area. So, that will address that area, and then also at 39th and Crackerneck, same thing I just mentioned, but in that location as well. On item number six, this is going to address two areas in the Fairmont neighborhood that have historically suffered flooding in that area. This will incorporate into a contract. We already have the ability to design the necessary improvements for those two areas at 23rd and Arlington, and then along Brookside as well. So, this, two projects that we know are longstanding community issues that are allowing us to find ways to solve those, and allowing us to do so with a very low expense to our taxpayers.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Anything else? Okay. Councilmember, could we take five and six together in vote form or separately? Okay. I was trying to be efficient, but we've got to vote for them separately. But we'll take item number five, if there's no further discussion. And Madam City Clerk, please call the roll for item number five.
We need a motion.
Motion, please.
Mr. Mayor, motion to approve item number five is written.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
We've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Spheres?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
McCandless?
Yes.
Steinmeier?
Yes.
Hobart?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. Item number five on the agenda passes 7-0. Item number six, do we have a motion for that, please?
Mr. Mayor, move approval of number six as written.
Okay.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing, no further discussion. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll on item number six.
Councilmember Spheres?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
McCandless?
Yes.
Steinmeier?
Yes.
Hobart?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. Item number six, it passes 7-0. Thank you. Item number seven, Councilmember Perkins.
Thank you, Mayor. This is just a discussion point more than anything else, and some excitement that we're moving on to the complete street, Phase Three of 24 Highway, which is the third phase of the complete street from 291 to Wilson Road. So, moving forward with the design contract, we're still kicking away with moving 24 Highway forward. This is one of the largest, I would say, one of the largest projects the city has done, so a big thank you to municipal services and our design team for cranking this out. It's a 20-plus million dollar project that does street enhancements, curb gutters, sidewalks, multi-modal lanes. This works with conjunction with the state of Missouri and a cost share program. So, once we get moving into the third phase, we're already working with the community down there to start a community improvement district so we can enhance what has taken place down there between Wilson Road and Sterling. So, this is a big jump forward, moving into the design phase. So, with that, I will make a motion for approval.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second to approve item number seven. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Spheres?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
McCandless?
Yes.
Steinmeier?
Yes.
Hobart?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes, and item number seven passes 7-0. Thank you. That brings us to a public hearing.
A public hearing for the application by Colin McLean requesting a rezoning from C2 General Commercial to R6 Single Family Residential for the property located at 400 North Osage Street. This is a new information-only public hearing.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. My name is Tom Skinnell. I'm the Community Development Director. This property is located just north of the Independence Square. The applicant intends to rezone the property from C2. It's currently an underutilized parking lot. And rezone this to R6 Single Family Residential, the purpose of which is to build a single-family home just off the square. This application was considered by the Planet Commission at the November 15th Planet Commission meeting, and the Planet Commission recommended approval of this rezoning. And staff has no new information to report.
Thank you. Any further discussion? That'll close the public hearing. Go ahead. Sorry, my fault, my fault.
Bill number 22-112, an ordinance approving a rezoning from District C2 General Commercial to District R6 Single Family Residential for the property at 400 North Osage Street in Independence, Missouri. Second and final reading.
Any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
Quick question for Mr. City Manager.
Proceed.
May I ask, direct a question to Mr. Skinnell?
Please.
Because we're going from commercial to residential, it's a parking lot, is this out of character, or is it surrounded by buildings, other commercial buildings?
So, the surrounding neighborhood, there is a multifamily house directly to the west. North of this property is more single-family homes, and further to the north and west are even more single-family homes. So, this single-family home would be in keeping with kind of what's out there.
Wonderful, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You bet. Please proceed.
Thank you. Just for the record, there is no letter of opposition or voice of opposition to my office regarding this rezoning.
Okay. Very good. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Spheres?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
McCandless?
Yes.
Steinmeier?
Yes.
Hobart?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
And this rezoning passes 7-0. Thank you. The affirmative, yes, and seven, yes, and zero opposed.
Thank you.
Is that correct? Okay. And that brings us to... Is that right? Okay. Non-ordinance action items, and Madam City Clerk, please read the bill.
Bill number 23-701, a resolution directing the city manager to record, livestream, and upload meetings of the City Charter Review Commission.
Okay. Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
I'd actually want to move to amend Bill number 23-701 to insert language into Section One after virtual streaming platforms, beginning with the commission's second meeting, which is when they will begin to substantially discuss revisions to the charter.
Okay. So, if I'm hearing you correctly, the first meeting would not be recorded, but thereafter it would?
That would be correct.
Okay. Any further discussion? And do we have a motion and a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you. So, we've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
The only thing this would do, as it says, the second meeting would be in recording, and anything after that, it would just give the charter committee any, just to get to know each other before any charter changes are discussed, any preliminary stuff out of the way. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
You know, the charter is going to be a really important document for the city, and it's important that people have the opportunity to give that input. I appreciate that the Charter Commission has tried to set their meetings up so it's a time when it's available to citizens to be able to attend, since their meetings will start at 5:00 PM. I did get some requests and information from people who felt like this needed to be a publicly streamed event, and I have modified my stance on this for that reason, but also securing the knowledge that the citizens of Independence will act with the highest level of integrity towards the good people who have volunteered to do what will be difficult work. And so, I am sure that people will treat them with the grace that should be afforded to them, doing that substantive work on behalf of the city. So, I will be voting yes.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Spheres?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
McCandless?
Yes.
Steinmeier?
Yes.
Hobart?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. And the motion to livestream passes 7-0.
Mr. Mayor, I was just...
Oh, motion to amend. We've got a motion to approve it, that's right. Thank you very much for that clarification. Any further discussion on the item as presented? No other further discussion? Madam City Clerk, please call the roll to approve the item.
Councilmember Spheres?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
McCandless?
Yes.
Steinmeier?
Yes.
Hobart?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
And it passes 7-0 to videotape the commission, Charter Commission. And yes, for me. So, that makes it 7-0. Thank you. I was not trying to get out of a vote.
Bill number 23-702, a resolution amending Resolution Number 6867 and updating language in Section Two.
Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
This was my request as a new addition to the city council, to be able to have appointees or recommend a list of people for the council to consider. It will change the number from nine to 11, but I appreciate consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember. Any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
So, I spoke privately. I'm hoping it's all right with her, I reveal this in regard to this. And when she originally asked me, I was adamantly against it, and, because I originally thought that the council member, or the charter community should only have seven members. And then it went to nine, and now 11, and I just, I think, thought it was just too much. I've kind of changed my stance on that now, because myself and one other council member, originally, we tried to hold this off until we had a last council member seated, so that they could have, you know, their people, they wanted on there, at least one person. So, I guess regardless of how many members it is, I believe that she should have her input of who's on there. So, I'll be voting yes.
Thank you, councilmember. Anybody else? Further discussion? Seeing no further discussion, please call the roll.
Councilmember Spheres?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
McCandless?
Yes.
Steinmeier?
Yes.
Hobart?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. This takes us to second readings. Please read the bill, Madam City Clerk.
Bill number 22-111, an ordinance to authorize the city manager to execute a contract between the city of Independence, Missouri, and the Missouri Highway and Transportation Commission, providing for participation in the Traffic Engineering Assistance Program and design services for a traffic study at Nolan Road and 35th Street for intersection safety and operational analysis. Second and final reading.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Spheres?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
McCandless?
Yes.
Steinmeier?
Yes.
Hobart?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes, and this item passes 7-0. Madam City Clerk, please read the bill.
Bill number 22-115, an ordinance amending Ordinance Number 19226 by updating the necessary easement descriptions for Parcell's Five and Twenty of the 24 Highway Complete Streets Phase One Project, Project Number 111801, in order to make necessary design changes. Second and final reading.
Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Spheres?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
McCandless?
Yes.
Steinmeier?
Yes.
Hobart?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?[1658.91]
Yes, and 22-115 passes seven zero. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
Before the second reading on 22-116?
Yes.
This is my final motion for the evening.
Okay.
I would like to postpone the second reading until our regularly scheduled council meeting on January 17th. We are currently scheduled to have a study session on this item next Monday on the 9th. And I believe we've discussed with the city manager, there may be some follow-up and some amendment or some further discussion on, not necessarily the language of the ballot language, but on some of this ordinance. We are going to further discuss that next week. So that's my motion, that we postpone the second reading until January 17th.
Second.
And then also put on the study session for January 9th. Is that part of your motion, too?
It's already on there, but yes.
Okay. Very good. We've got a motion in a second. Any further discussion on 22-116? Seeing no further discussion. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll to postpone this to January 17th.
Councilmember Spears?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
McCandless?
Yes.
Steinmeier?
Yes.
Hobart?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. The postponement to January 17th is passed seven to zero. And this brings us to first readings. And Madam City Clerk, please proceed.
Bill number 22-113, An Ordinance Adopting Amendments to the Fiscal Year 2021-2022 Budget, which was approved by Ordinance Number 19228. Bill number 22-113, An Ordinance Adopting Amendments to the Fiscal Year 2021 to 2022 Budget, which was approved by Ordinance Number 19228. Second and final reading.
Any discussion on this? Seeing no discussion. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Spears?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
McCandless?
Yes.
Steinmeier?
Yes.
Hobart?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes, and this item passes seven zero.
Bill number 22-114, An Ordinance Adopting Amendments to the Fiscal Year 2022-2023 Budget, which was approved by Ordinance Number 19340. Bill number 22-114, An Ordinance Adopting Amendments to the Fiscal Year 2022-2023 Budget, which was approved by Ordinance Number 19340. Second and final reading.
Any further discussion on this item? Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Spears?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
McCandless?
Yes.
Steinmeier?
Yes.
Hobart?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes, and this item passes seven zero. Madam City Clerk, please proceed.
Bill number 23-001, An Ordinance Amending Article 1, Council Meetings of the Independence City Code and Repealing the Council Rules of Procedure. Bill number 23-002, An Ordinance Finding and Granting Two 10-Foot General Utility Easements to Spire Missouri Inc. across part of lots 1 and 2 of Morningside Heights. Bill number 23-0... Nope, we're done with that one.
Now you could read it again. It was popular.
That's all the first reading.
Very good. And if I'm correct, that'll bring us to council member comments. Is that correct? Councilmember Stewart?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to take this time to speak on, actually, our first reading that we did tonight, 23-001. This is, this is going to be the amendments to the council meeting rules and procedures. And in my opinion, this thing has some serious flaws. When you read through this thing, some of the things that I just really don't understand. Some of it was spoken in the council member comments tonight. A couple of things that I see wrong with it is it's seriously restricting or makes some major rule changes to constituents that actually want to come up and talk to us. And a couple, one of the other things is, in order for, if I wanted to bring something or if anybody else up here wanted to bring something forward to the city council for a vote, we first have to get a consensus of four of us, but the mayor doesn't. I mean, what's that all about?
If I can interject there, that's a mistype. That is not what the intent. It was the mayor or four council members. But it was not, I do not have control to put an item on the agenda myself exclusively. So I understand that's the interpretation of someone, and I can understand that.
Well, that was my interpretation as well.
I understand, but I'm, I, but if I can respectfully just clarify that, that...
As I asked in our study session, I was told, yes, that's the way it was. So...
Okay. I didn't, I didn't recall that, but that's not the intent, but we can certainly write the language to clarify that.
Well, I think, I think the language just needs to go away because all it's doing is it's silencing my voice from my constituents. And everybody else up here is doing the same thing. Just one, two examples, the resolutions that Councilmember Steinmeier and I brought forward tonight, we couldn't have brought those forward just ourselves. We would have had to get four of you to agree before we could even brought it forward. And I hope all my colleagues will really read through that and see some of the stuff that's in there, because there's some bad stuff. And if it's voted for as is, the only thing I can see it say is, you know, this might come back to bite you at some point, so be careful what you ask for. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Perkins?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Hope everybody had a great start of the new year, some good conversation, good discussions. I think a good takeaway is, one, with the conversation that we had with the trash and different discussions that we had with that, that we listened, we understand, and we did the appropriate action. I would agree with my colleague, Councilman Stewart, too, equally as passionate. I think there is some flaws here, and I do believe some sidebar conversations I've had with my other colleagues, that those will be addressed, removed, or whatever appropriate actions we'll take in a couple of weeks. So I think those concerns are definitely echoed, and I have some of those concerns as well. So, for sure. So with that, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Spears?
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
Thank you. Just echo my, echo Councilmember Perkins's comments relative to our discussion on trash. We heard the citizens of Independence, we listened, and we took the appropriate action. And, you know, I think that's, that's the way government's supposed to work. And certainly in this case, I think it did. And, and also, we just wish everyone a Happy New Year and hope we're off to a good start.
Thank you. Councilmember Hobart, or should I go with Councilmember McCandless next? What would you like?
I'm always happy to go. You know that. Thanks for all the folks for coming out tonight, of course. Happy New Year. Couple of thoughts on the... On the council policies and procedures. I, I got, most of you know I'm a lawyer. I've read lots and lots of policies and procedures, lots and lots of sets of rules. And there are lots and lots of problems with the set of rules that we have that are on the agenda. I've talked to a number of my colleagues up here about those, and we're going to make some serious changes. I don't know how many of those we're going to get to by the next council meeting. I can tell you this, there's a lot in there that won't make it on and that aren't going to get passed. So I can also tell you that the majority of us, if not all of us, want to leave prayer and the invocation on the agenda. I can't promise you that'll stay that way forever, but it will stay that way for now. So that's not going anywhere. Actually, there have been a few folks that reached out and said, you might branch out and try some other denominations or other, maybe not just straight traditional Christian religions or belief systems, which maybe that's, maybe that's right. I don't know. But I just want to let you folks know that, because that is important. And, and I want you folks to, I want to say thanks again. We really do, in general, you know, there were a lot of 7-0 votes up here. And as much as we disagree and sometimes don't talk and sometimes do talk, there are times when we all have good ideas and when we all can come together. Tonight was one of those nights. And I'm hopeful that that can be indicative of maybe a few more of those nights this year. So doesn't have to be all the time. And from time to time, good government is us not agreeing and is us fighting about things. But I want to thank all of my colleagues for the hard work and disagreements and ideas that got us to tonight, the citizens, the business owners, the contributions. It was good work by all. We will continue to do those things and put in the work, and hopefully we'll keep taking steps forward. We've got a really big vote coming up that has a chance to be another step forward for the city with the marijuana tax. That's in 90-some days. That is pure bonus money for us. Folks that buy marijuana recreationally will, will, if we pass the tax, contribute 3% on all of those sales. That's free money that we can use to help contribute to what we're calling now a Public Safety Center. That's going to be the subject part of our, our study session next week. If you're interested, watch that, please. So yet another way to take a step forward for the city. 35th Street, baby, for you and Wes. Folks, thank you.
Pardon me, Councilmember McCandless?
Thank you, Mayor. I want to recognize Mr. Everson, who has been doing great work in community organizing in his neighborhood. And to offer an opportunity to people who might be interested in that, UMKC, UMKC Center for Neighborhoods does training on neighborhood associations, bylaws, how they function, how they can work with cities. It might be an opportunity for people who are looking at getting their neighbors together to help improve their neighborhoods. So if anybody's interested in that, come and visit with me. I'd be delighted to tell you more about that and connect you with resources. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I just want to wish everybody a Happy New Years and hopefully it was a safe and productive time. Councilmember Steinmeier, please forgive me. That was not intentional, my friend. I was just looking up and down the aisle here, and I'm not used to looking there. So you are next and take as much time as you need. Matter of fact, you can take my time if you like.
No, I don't need that much time. I, Happy New Year, everyone. I'm out in Oakland, California. It's soggy wet, visiting my son. So I'm sorry I wasn't there tonight. But anytime I can be a part and watch citizens speak about the things that are passionate about, and it just, it fills my heart with gratitude for the city that I live in and the people that we serve. I'm grateful for you standing for small business tonight and letting, and sending a message to not just our city, but to any other small businesses that, you know, when you come and invest in our city and you, and you put a quality product out there and provide quality service, that people will respond. And I just thank the federal family for their efforts to just get engaged and to let them, let us hear what's important to you and let your, your customer base speak for you as well. I've never seen such a response email-wise. So I just wanted to just say that and let you know that while we continue to move forward into a new year, I do share my concerns with Councilmember Stewart and Perkins, who have spoken about the rules and changes for the council. I, I think we need to have a good discussion on what's, what we feel is important. But I can tell you that anything that minimizes or silences the voice of the people that we represent in our city, we're going to continue to wrestle with that. I don't see any benefit to that at all. I know there's, there's several of my colleagues that have concerns, and I can't wait for the discussion in our next council meeting. So I'll be heading home tomorrow. I'd like someone to please turn on the heat so that it's warmer when I get back. So God bless you all. Have a great evening. Thank you, Mayor, for your time.
You bet, and I did not intend to miss you there, so please forgive me. But anyway, no, I want to thank everyone for being here tonight. I appreciate your enthusiasm for trash and the work that you did there. I appreciate people coming in and talking and sharing their ideas. However, if you want to call us and have me talk to you personally, I will be happy to do that anytime. So, you know, feel open. And if there's anyone here that's called me and I have not responded to them, let me know. Because if I, I believe I respond to everybody who says I want to talk to the mayor, and please have them call me. So Mr. Love is not here, but I know I talk to him a lot. So with that being said, I want to thank you all for being here. With that, I will also turn it over to the city manager to see if he has any official comments to close out our meeting.
Mayor, I would add just one thing. The council agenda that has been published for next week does not actually reflect a presentation on the marijuana sales tax. The city clerk very kindly just let me know that a moment ago in my absence last week, so I'm getting caught up on this stuff. If the council is okay with it based on your vote to postpone, I assume you are. But just given the magnitude of that issue, unless there's any opposition, we will plan to amend that agenda to reflect that the marijuana sales tax conversation will take place at the study session next week, January 9th.
And from our vote, I would suspect there'd be no opposition to this. Anyone opposed or any concerns? Okay.
Thank you all very much.
Yep, and that's how it works when people get together and put something on the study session. So, very good. Anything else? All right, with that, we'll call the meeting adjourned. Thank you all. Yeah, that'd be great. Thank you.